Sorry, my memory is not that good anymore. Right. At one time it was.
Everybody take their seats, please.
I appreciate that.
Good afternoon. It is the continuation of our workshop. It is February the 20th, 2018. We have three remaining items on our list of minions of things that we've covered today. Eric Robinson has stepped out for a quick minute and will be joining us as soon as he completes his tasks. And the next item is Central Sarasota County School Site. And we've asked Kathy Eba, Long Range Planning, and Scott Limpy, our COO, to handle this item. Scott?
Kathy's baby.
Good afternoon. Today, we are bringing to you a potential school site. As you know, we were in last year's budget, the 1718 budget. We allocated $2.5 million for the purchase of a elementary school site somewhere in the central county area, which is an area we don't have a school site, although we have a lot of growth with the Palma Ranch, Border Road, Laurel Road, Knights Trail Road, corridors, and the Honorae section as well. So we, last year, we brought to you a site in the Palma Ranch development area. We, we asked for and received permission to enter negotiations with that property owner to secure a site. Those negotiations fell through, and so we went back to the drawing board. We looked at a larger area to see what land could be available for us for this elementary school site. We did everything as far north as Clark Road, as far south as Laurel Road, Border Road, as far east as the interstate, actually a little bit beyond the interstate, to what we know, what we call the Clark Road Properties area, and then as far west as Route 41. We ended up with two sites that we thought might work. One of them was on Honorae, fairly close to Clark Road, about a mile away from Clark Road. The other property is the one that we are bringing forward to you today. We know, we call it the Walker Property because it is owned by Mr. Walker. It is located about halfway between Laurel Road and 676 off of Honorae Boulevard, across from what is known as the Instride Property, a horse ranch. The other neighbors are the Mission Valley and Calusa Lakes neighborhoods. We are bringing this site to you and asking for permission to enter in contract negotiations. We have done our due diligence on the property. The property is being asked for, for $3.4 million, which of course is over the $2.5 million that we currently have. So we'd have to allocate in next year's capital budget additional monies to cover the, whatever balance there is. But that's not the big challenge with this property. The big challenge is, is that there is an FPNL transmission line that goes diagonal through this property, as noted on the map. I've highlighted it on a large white line. That FPNL transmission line cannot be buried. We have worked with FPNL to acquire an estimate as to what it would cost us to move that property, move that line over to diagonal. So the property, so it would, we would take it and make it a diagonal along the neighborhood, along the backyard of the neighborhoods that are adjacent to the property. We're looking at about $3 million to move those transmission lines. Mr. Walker has indicated that he is open to negotiations, including this discussion as part of our negotiations for the sale of the property. What that means, I can't tell you today, just that it will be one of the discussion points that we will have with Mr. Walker if you give us permission to enter in negotiations. There are some other things we need to do in order to move forward with this property. As you know, we have, as part of our interlocal agreement on school concurrency, we have established standards on how we work with our local governments. We need to bring this back to the committee. They have reviewed this property in the past, as in the first meeting that selected the Palma Ranch site. It was their second choice, so we're going to bring this back to them. We also are going to need to do a rezoning of the property. It is currently zoned RSF2, we could, which doesn't allow for a school use by right. So we will need to rezone this to government use. That will require neighborhood meetings with the Calusa Lakes and Mission Valley neighborhoods. So there is still work left to be done before we would bring this back to you, obviously on, working on the contract with Mr. Walker. I can't tell you exactly when it would be, then we would be able to bring this back to you. A lot of it has to do with how quickly we'd be able to accomplish all that we need to do, the rezoning, the neighborhood meetings, and the meeting according to our interlocal. But we are hopeful, Mr. Walker, we have talked to Mr. Walker repeatedly over the last two and a half years as we've been looking for this site, and he has been very good to work with. He is excited about the opportunity to have a school in and on his property. He likes this use. He has, he has had other offers, but he continues to come to us, to work with us, because he likes the idea of having his property become a future school site. So at that, if there's any questions, I'm happy to entertain them, but all we're looking for today is kind of your cursory nod that allows us to move forward with what we need to do in order to see if we can come, come to a contract with Mr. Walker.
Did I look at this and see another piece of property that we, we estimated moving FPNL lines would be a million dollars? Did I make that up in my mind?
So there were two. We had two estimates from FPNL. One was, the low end was 1.5, the high end was about 2.5. But then neither one of those included additional efforts that we will need to, to work on. So we believe that that additional effort brings us to the 3 million mark. We also think that the low end is not going to be accurate. The low end, the difference between the two of them is how many power lines are going to be needed, how many poles are going to be needed. The low end assumes that you only need to take the existing pole and, and replace it with another existing pole. Mark Smith from our construction department looked at this and doesn't believe that's going to be, that's going to work. We're going to have to add some new poles. That's where the higher end valuation comes in, is that it adds two new poles in addition to replacing the existing one.
I like the location very much, but my question is, when you relocate those lines, where are you going to relocate them? On other people's property in Calusa Lake or in any other area? Because I know sometimes residents do not want those power lines in their backyard either.
Well, so they won't be on their property, but they would be in their backyard. We would, we would take, take, here, I have the site up on my computer screen, so let's see if I can show this to you. And there's a map on page two, on the backside of page two, but it's probably easier if I point it out to you. So this is the property. The power lines go right now diagonally from one corner of the property to the other. We would take the property line, we'd move it back to the corner, and then move the lines along the backyards of the neighborhood. So we'd take a straight diagonal and make it into an angle.
And then people's, and this would go on our property?
Yes.
Back of what would be our property?
Yes.
But other people would have houses that would look out at this?
Yes.
Which, you know, I almost bought a house once and refused to buy it because I had high, you know, and, and there's all kinds of conjectures as what, what happens with these kinds of.
We, we understand the difficulties. That's why it would be addressed through the neighborhood meeting. We think there's a proper enough buffering on this property. This property is, is much larger than we were originally looking to acquire. So we have the ability to do some buffering. There's also some natural buffering, which we can do some enhancements to. There's some tree, there's a, there's a fairly developed tree line that exists along that area. So between the existing plus additional, we're hopeful that we can work with the neighborhood to find a way that, that this works for them. We understand it's not the best condition, but as I said, we have looked very hard for property in this area, and we are down to this site.
And we're looking at about 7 million now, if we include both of those two situations? The cost of the property and the cost of the.
Well, the, the second piece of it would be, would be involved with the, we have, we have a $20 million wedge? We have a 20 million.
Initially 30.
We have a $20 million wedge for Elementary J, so it would be put into the site costs involved in Elementary J. Also, it would be something that we would negotiate with Mr. Walker. We, he's asking for 3.4, but this is before the, the estimate came back for, from FPNL, so we will use this as one of our discussion points with Mr. Walker. He is aware that we will be asking to talk about the price of the, the, the cost of the land, and given that we're looking at a $3 million improvement.
Yeah, I have an FPL. He's been in the back of my house. And I have lines, and it's, a lot of it's shaded. You can't even tell it because there's trees around there, and I have no problem with that.
Well, we will certainly do our best to do some buffering and enhancements so that it works with the neighborhood. We want to be, if we were to acquire this property, we would want to be a good neighbor.
Surely.
Could I just add real quick? As we began this search for property.
Two and a half years ago.
Two and a half years ago, we really set out to find a site to relieve Ashton Elementary School. When you look to the south of Ashton, this would also butt up against Laurel Nakomas, which is a K8. So there are some challenges in regards to, if you tried to carve out an attendance zone for an elementary school, how it might affect a K8 school that it butts up against. This site is large enough for us to contemplate doing a K8 on that site, which alleviates the concern about, would you actually ask kids to go somewhere K5 and then transfer into Laurel Nakomas for a middle school experience? The added benefit is, not only would we address our issue at Ashton, but you could address your issue at Sarasota Middle School. And so although it is twice the size that we originally contemplated, it does allow us to consider a K8, which at this point in time would be my recommendation, is that we, we build up, we do a K8, then its boundary would butt up directly against Laurel Nakomas, so that we have seamless K8 there. But then it would relieve both Ashton and Sarah Middle, so there is an added benefit to the larger site. At least it allows the K8 to be part of that discussion. Some of the other sites that we contemplated in that 20-acre ballpark do not allow us to have a conversation about K8, which means we would have a rather awkward conversation about boundaries at some point in time.
Shirley?
Well, K8 brings me up to a whole bunch of other questions. I mean, normally we're saying, you know, we have middle schools for transitioned into high school, and we have all kinds of programs for our middle schools. You know, the STEM programs and all of that. I mean, would we even be able to address those?
Absolutely. There's nothing about this site that would limit that school programmatically in any way.
At the elementary or middle school level?
Correct.
I, I am concerned about the increased costs. I mean, we were looking at 2.5 million, and now we're looking at 7. I mean, is there anything besides this FPL power line about that site that would cause additional site improvement costs?
No, we've, we've had, we've done our due diligence. DMK Associates did, did our environmental study for us, and the only thing that they found is exactly what we expected, is that we have an environment, we have a FPNL line. But the rest of the site is very, is, and actually for this area, considering the amount of wetlands you usually find in this area, there's no wetlands on this property. There is a, there is a tributary on there, but we, we can work around that because it, it deals with a smaller piece of the property. So, no, it's a good site.
Now, when FPL just runs a line, I mean, can they just run a line across somebody's property? Or did they pay Mr. Walker something to run that line across? Or do they continue to pay something to run that line across?
Once upon a time, I'm sure, and it may not even been Mr. Walker, it may have been a previous owner before Mr. Walker, at some point, they paid somebody to have an easement go through that property. When that was, we, we don't know, but I, it happened at some point. It doesn't continue. There isn't a continued payout for the use of the easement. Once the easement's established, it's a one-time deal.
You have easements on a number of your properties that are FPL, local governments, and while they don't pay you anything for that, they don't do it without asking your permission. We enter into formal agreements with them, so it's not unusual to have an easement even on your properties.
Well, and, and, I mean, and do we, like you say, if it's much larger than what we needed, I mean, could we just cut off that part where the FPL line goes through, or cut off that triangle? We have to buy the whole thing.
There's no way to make the property work without, because of the, because of the location of that FPNL easement, that it goes direct and diagonally through the center of the property, it just makes it really difficult. We're gonna, we're gonna have to deal with that FPNL easement if we want this property.
Caroline?
What I'm hearing is that you're asking for permission to, to search further, research further, and see what the actual cost would be?
That's right.
Because you don't know it'll be that cost.
Right.
So you want, you want us to say yes, so you can further explore the option?
We enter into formal negotiation with the owner, yeah.
Right. And then at that point, then we could say yes or no.
Yes. This is not, you're not giving us the permission to purchase the property. You're asking, you're giving us permission to enter into formal negotiations. Mr. Walker has given us 128-day due diligence period. That period actually expired in January. He gave in us an, an extension so that we could have this workshop with you. If we don't give Mr. Walker an answer very quickly, then he will, he will terminate our discussions and move to other property owners. So what he's looking for today is just a good faith. Yes, we want to continue negotiations. He's also going to ask, he's already asked for a timeline, so that he knows how long we would go through that negotiation period. I don't think Mr. Walker wants to tie this property up forever if we're not going to end up buying it.
So my bottom line is, we are not losing anything. We would not be losing anything to give you an okay, to continue negotiations with him.
Well, actually, at this point, we don't have, at this point, all we have is an offer to purchase from him. We haven't entered into negotiations, so you would be giving us permission to enter into formal negotiations with him.
Well, you'd also be entering into discussions with the community, too, would you not? Before you came back, and there'd be costs associated with that to some extent.
There's no costs associated with the other thing, but you're, there's time, staff time, of course. So whatever costs associated with, with your staff time, but we, we would, we, between now and the time you would see this, we would not bring this back to you if we weren't able to get the rezoning that we need, if we weren't able to enter into an agreement with the neighborhood, if we weren't able to address the issues regarding the FPL, the SPNL line. If we couldn't do all the things that we need to do in order to make this property actually work for us to enter into a formal sale, we, you wouldn't see this property again. You'd see us once again coming to you with another site.
So I don't see us losing anything by allowing you to continue.
I don't. That, right now, you're just giving us permission to continue working.
Right.
Any other questions? I, I'm fine to go ahead with this.
I am, too.
Mine goes to, well, maybe you, what about the approval from the state to be actually being able to build another elementary school when we have open seats at some of our other schools in the North County?
So what this would do is, this would give us an additional piece of property in our inventory, just as we have been acquiring other pieces of property. Last year, you, we entered, we, we bought the property at the West Villages site. We're currently working to acquire a site at Lakewood Ranch. Officially, we have a spot designated on their map, but we don't own that site. We're also working to acquire a site at Clark Road Properties. So all we're doing right now is acquiring land, because it's a lot easier for us to acquire land and have it in our inventory, so that when the school in that location is needed, we're able to build on it. Right now, when we look at where we have land or where we are currently working to acquire land, this is a major hole for us. We do not have land in the central county. So at the point that we need to build a school in this area, we don't have the capacity to do so because we don't own any land. What we're asking to do is acquire a piece of land and put it in our inventory, and then when we're ready to build the school site, we would then go forward with the permission from the state to acquire the, the authority to do that.
I like this piece of property.
You're land banking, and you don't need approval to do that. But Kathy's right. I mean, every time they develop, it gets harder and harder.
Gets more and more expensive and harder and harder. And I know what an effort it was for us to buy the last piece of property that we bought in Northport with all those lots that were platted, and it was during the recession time and having to buy up 90-something.
93.
Individual lots was not fun, was it?
Nope.
Okay.
It also goes without saying before you end this conversation, that as you have conversation about shelter space mid-county, that this site would be central to that conversation. And ultimately, once we built on this site, so when we talk about the location of what we build, it would enter into a conversation about shelters mid-county. So it's ideally situated between two major roadways near the interstate. It certainly, when someone said, what's the long-term for shelter, this is part of our solution.
In fact, the city of.
Came up, I'm sorry, and it came up both at the convocation and at the Irma debrief on February the 9th. This was part of the, of the midterm, long-term solutions.
And the city of, the city of Northport is part of that group that we have to meet with, according to the interlocal, and the city of, I meant, the city of Venice. The city of Venice is a part of that, that committee because of the, the jurisdiction associated with Laurel Road and the redistricting of Laurel Road, and that is, that is their primary concern. Their primary concern is where, where do we acquire a site that can make sure we have, we have evacuation for their, for their residents, so.
Would they be interested in helping us?
That's a whole nother discussion. Right now, again, we're, right, at this point, we're trying to.
Right now, Venice is trying to redo the roads on Venice Avenue, and as we all know, that's turned out to be, what, three times, yeah, three times more expensive than they thought.
But there's no shelter. Venice does not have a shelter, so.
That's right. They don't.
This is not in the Venice City limits.
No, it's not, but it's.
But it would serve the Venice people.
Right. It would serve the Venice area.
If we get to the point, or when we get to the point where we're building a school, that's a conversation we'll have, though, probably more with the county than, than with the city. As you think back to the schools we built recently that serve as shelters, there has been money available, primarily through grants, but we would go back to the county, for example, and say, the structural hardening of this facility costs X, and adding a generator costs Y, and so add those together, and it's Z amount of money. And the county's worked with us pretty collaboratively to help us fund the difference, so we'd continue to do that.
And if it would make you feel better, Ms. Brown, we can certainly keep you abreast as we move forward. Obviously, this has a lot more pieces to it than other land purchases that we've brought to you before, so as we go through each of the steps, we certainly could keep you abreast
Any other questions? Any other comments?
Go forth.
Go forth and do.
Thank you.
And the next item is Ms. Shirley Brown talking about desegregation.
It was brought to my attention that there's some problems on some buses, and there's some other problems involved in this too, but that some parents are upset that they don't get to go to their neighborhood schools. And I do understand that, yes, we have open, not, the open enrollment and the choice programs, but a lot of these parents move throughout the year, and when they move from one neighborhood to the next. And in fact, there's one that if they move from the front of a neighborhood to the back of the neighborhood, the kids go to a different school. This runs into, or perhaps maybe Scott could explain what these insetts are, and they've been there for many years, and because it's a difficult situation, sometimes can be touchy, it often is left, or pushed to the side. But I've been hearing from people from inside the community, in fact, there was one woman last week that was frustrated. The school was calling her, her child was sick. She had no car, she didn't have a transportation, she couldn't pick them up. They called again, and she says, "I still, I don't have a ride, I can't get a ride, I can't pick them up." On the third call, they were threatening to call DCF on her. There's a, is it DCF, whatever it is these days?
Children and family.
But she said, "But I can't, I can't get there. What am I supposed to do?" And, and others that are, you know, some that live within walking distance of Bayhaven, some that live in walking distance from Emma Booker, but wondering if there's something else that we can do other than this inset plan that we've got where it breaks up these neighborhoods so much, and you can even see that there's one itty-bitty little one, there's a little bitty green spot in the middle of the blue spot of this Alta Vista where they send it. I don't know what the purpose was for breaking that little bit out and sending them to Southside, or, I mean, I think we need to look at this and make a better plan. And one of them, they were concerned about, and in fact, even when I was up in Tallahassee, Rousseau said to me, "What is the representative?", he's a senator now, he says, "What's the problem with these buses?" He says, "I've been called on to look at these buses that they're having from this community and the problems that they're having." I said, "Well, I'm looking at that also." And it also brings up another one, when there is a problem on these buses that take 35, 45 minutes to get to school, and then normally what we do is say, "Well, you can't ride the bus anymore if you have a problem." Well, then what happens? These parents have a very difficult time to get to school, and when we're talking about kids that, you know, qualify for free and reduced lunch, it's very, very difficult. I would like to somehow spend some extra time working with this community, because I, I mean, I don't think it should be a solution that comes from, from the landings. I think we need to work with this community and help them better understand what is it that they want, because just telling them, and a lot of them probably don't even understand how that all works, because they've called the choice office. Some of these have called the choice office, and they said they don't get very good response. So they're not really happy with what we call our choice, especially when they move. Maybe there's some rules that we could change or allow for there, but perhaps somehow, you know, get these kids districted to their neighborhood school and give them a choice option where we can also offer busing, you know, to let them go to what school they want, rather than say, "This is the school you have to go to, this is the school you have to go to." There's one student that went to Wilkinson, Emma, Wilkinson, Wilkinson, Philippi, Philippi. I mean, they're moved around, and we know that mobility is a problem. We've got some of these kids going to two and three, maybe four schools in one year, but they're still living in the same community. But when they move, or when they are removed from foster care and brought back to the parents, they're in a different school district, and all of a sudden, those rules don't help anymore to put these kids in a school that will give them to stay in the same school for a year.
I thought we allowed them to stay in the same school.
That's right. So do I. That's what we allow them.
While they're in foster care, when they come out of foster care and they're staying, and a mother may be homeless, and they go from here to there, they don't get to stay in the same school.
That's not my understanding.
When they go into foster care, they remain at the school they were at. If, when they come out of foster care, they're going to a different address than they would go to the assigned school coming out of foster care. But a child in foster care is afforded continuous enrollment so that they're not having to move based on a placement with a foster parent.
But when they come out of foster care, I mean, even that's one of the issues that we need to look at. When they come out of foster care and they go back to the parent, then that, that protection that we give them to stay in the same school is removed.
I think the scenario you're talking about is if the family moved while the child was in foster care. If they're going back to the same home that they left, it would be continuous, but if at some time during the time they were in foster care, that their family moved to another attendance zone, I think that's the scenario.
And you're talking about a rather mobile, some of these move several times in a year even for one reason or another. But I'd like to maybe pursue that we have some discussions with the community, not that we come up with decisions, but that the community is the one who helps us decide. But what I'm hearing from the community members that I've talked to is they want to be looking at being able to go to the school that's in their neighborhood, and even looking at, I mean, I don't know what the waiting lists are for Bayhaven anymore, and does that list where they, where they fill out that long list and get on some list from when they were born, does that still work?
Yes.
Excuse me?
You asked the question, I'm answering you. Yes.
I'm not asking the question of you, and I'm not done asking the question. And, and do we still want to use that, or now that we have open enrollment, I mean, do we, does, does this still have, where we have this one school that's the magnet and take it away from the neighborhood and give it to everyone else? That's another question that was posed to me, and do we still, do we still have, do we, because we set it up as a magnet program to help in the desegregation program, do those rules still count? And do we still need to look at it this way? And I would just like to be able to work with the community, or not me personally, but have the district work with the community. A, to explain to them about the choice program, and to maybe look at some different rules for this community for the choice program, and perhaps relook at these inset things that make kids, you know, because there's, there's blocks, you, and you live on this block, the bus picks you up to go there, you live on that one, they go there. So that's what I would like to see, is that we work with the community to come up with perhaps a new way of addressing this issue, but also perhaps having different standards for their choice program, rather than having the inset program, maybe having looser issues on the choice program for them.
I believe those questions were rhetorical. I mean, I don't know that you're looking for concrete answers. I can talk to you about the current system, but I think you're envisioning a system that would require significant change, and at the board's direction, we would enter into those conversations. And so I just want to make sure you're not looking for answers.
I know I'm not looking for you, but, but it's, it isn't just something that just came up this past month or this past year. This is something that I have been hearing from parents, you know, for several years, and, and, you know, maybe it's, I know there's, because of the touchy situation, we haven't been wanting to touch it, but I think maybe we ought to look at it. But again, I don't think it's something that the landings should do, I think it's something we should do with the community and get their input before we make any changes.
First off, I'd like to know why the insetts are as they are, because there must be a reason that those insetts were put in, so I want to know that. And second, I'd like to, the magnet program has been in existence for a long time, and I certainly would not want to change that magnet program, because that magnet program helps to draw the population where we need the population to be. And that's one of the benefits of Booker High, Booker Middle School, Booker High School, and Bayhaven. And the other is, I understand a lot of this is because of Philippi Shores and the busing that's going on with Philippi Shores. So I want to see how much that has really impacted the decision and the discussion that we're having now, rather than it just being an isolated incident. So those are questions that I have.
Well, I have questions, or had questions about Bayhaven. If you remember, two or three years ago, I said to Lori White, "Hey, what's the story at Bayhaven?", and I found out that there were many, many Manatee families who were getting into Bayhaven before Sarasota County families were, because we had this list of people that, a list of children that, that got on the list when they were born or before they were born, and that we were allowing those, those folks. So there's some things that I think may predate my involvement, Shirley, in the board, which has been since 2010. So I would like to know more about how this all came about, because I think it all preceded choice, or anything that we now define today as choice.
It did. And part of the, Kathy, part of this was that when we built Tatum Ridge, we had to redistrict some of the students in order to fill them, fill Tatum Ridge. And Tatum Ridge--
Tatum Ridge? I'm listening.
And Tatum Ridge, what was happening is that all the low socioeconomic kids were being left at Brentwood and not Tatum Ridge. So we had to make sure that the shift occurred, that the kids from Brentwood be a mixture. So, I mean, so it's a lot more in-depth than what is just in the surface that we see here on this map.
Yes, I know a lot of this predates, you know, you, then it definitely predates me. So I just have some general, just trying to understand. So it was, Shirley said that parents are saying, "I don't want my kid, my child, to go to school X, I want my kid to go to M or E." Is it, is M or E full, or they can't choice into M or E? I mean, what's, what's the, what's the, I mean, it's not just M or E, but Gochio or any other schools that are in their district?
So two things I'd say. First, yes, M or E is full. Kathy and I were just talking, we think there's about a dozen portables on that campus today. A lot of that is office space that we're trying to fix with some building renovation, but the fact of the matter is, if you look at just enrollment versus capacity, M is full. The other thing that's important to understand, the way choice works today, because there's pretty open choice, it's choice to schools that have seats, and it's without transportation. And I think in the, in the instances that Ms. Brown is talking about, choice without transportation is really no choice if you're that family that is worried about, "How do I come and get my student who is sick?", so.
No, but she alluded that there were people who were within walking distance. My next question is, we were talking about inset. I have not done it as much as Ms. Brown, but I've ridden an inset bus, and I know that those rides are very long and put pressure on kids and staff, and so I know that that's a deterrent, but I also think, this is again, my thinking, is that going to some of these schools that they're inset to may actually be a benefit to them. And so my question is, is having a child go to an inset school, do those kids do better than their peers in the same neighborhood? Or do they do worse? What, what impact does this have on the students? Because at the end of the day, that's what I care about, is the students. Is this, is this having a negative or positive impact on them? And I don't expect you to answer that question now, unless you can, but I don't, I don't think, is that something you?
Well, it's, it's an easy question to ask, very difficult to answer--
I agree.
--in that you have to really almost do what's called a twin study, where you have similar situated students, and you try to determine the impact of individual school sites. But I think it's hard to ignore the geography when you talk about what the issues are in transportation.
I've answered all my questions.
And so, this is what we're talking about, is a bus ride versus here. And so--
In season.
It's a long--
When we talk about, if we ever paid a premium for certain routes, time, distance, and load would be factors, and it would ultimately be the insetts, because they're the longest routes that we provide. They're typically our youngest students. You can ask an elementary student to sit still for 15 minutes, half hour is pushing it, after that, it's--
I agree. It was unruly. And so then my next issue is, this is an uncomfortable subject to bring up, because I know as a new board member, you really shouldn't, you know, question previous, you know, votes on the board, but, but maybe we can revisit it. I remember, I was in the room when you guys made the decision about Bayhaven, and if I remember correctly, it was basically, we're not going to add more, the people who were already on the list who are from Manatee got to stay on the list, but everybody after that period of time, Sarasota people took preference--
Yes.
--which basically meant that Manatee people really couldn't get on the list anymore because there's always be-- And is it possible to revisit that? I mean, if you're, I'm sorry, I just believe if you're a Sarasota resident, you usurp, you usurp any Manatee resident, regardless whether you're on the list or not. So is there any way to go back and look at, at that, at that vote, at that decision, to see if we can, you know, give Sarasota residents a privilege over any and all Manatee residents, even the ones that are currently on the list?
Absolutely.
How would that affect what the state's doing, though? The state is saying that we have to be open across districts.
Well, we, yeah, if there's capacity, but we also have to, we also are allowed to give preference to students in our district.
Certainly.
Certainly. So, so is, I mean, if the, if the will of the board is to revisit that decision, is that something that you could, you could ask the will of the board to see?
Absolutely. It's always been my understanding that the meeting that we did at lunchtime, which is now after lunch, that staff didn't put a lot of time into developing, but then if it were the desire of the board, that we would then workshop and kind of get an outline of what kind of information that you're looking for. The points that I've captured for a future workshop would be kind of a history of the insetts. Certainly, as you look at the map, it defies logic, but it made sense to someone at some point in time, so to get a clear--
[inaudible]
--a clear understanding of how the map came to be, and then an overview of the Bayhaven admissions, applications process, and then to seek direction from the board on how to proceed. But I do think that we're kind of lacking a historical context here, and then I think Bayhaven is certainly ripe for future discussion.
Thank you.
Shirley?
From, from what I gleaned from the people from the community that I talked to, they said that it was part of this desegregation plan, whether it was court-ordered or whether we brought it forward ourselves. Regardless, I mean, 30 years ago is a long time, and I don't--
Longer than that.
I don't know at what time Bayhaven was closed to the neighborhood. I mean, we can find out that, but that's some of the things that the neighborhood is saying, you know, "You've taken away one of our schools, and you're making our kids go somewhere else." Or, and perhaps, especially now, at least when they're having these discussions on open enrollment, if we could look at these kids in these, in those inset areas and let them choose which of the schools they want to go to, and have transportation among those districts, well, at least those little ones. I mean, I don't know why this one from, went, you know, because even, even, even those going to M have, have a long distance to go to, and you know another one? These buses can't go down 41, because if a problem arises, they have to be able to pull over, and they can't pull over on 41. So they have to go through the neighborhoods all the way, weaving in and out, in and out, and, and it's a very hard, you say you have discipline problems, but what happens is, if you have a problem being on a bus, you're supposed to get kicked off the bus, and the principals have a very hard time doing that, because they know these kids need every day, and they know if they don't have the bus transportation, it's very hard for them to get to school. It's not that they don't want these, they want what's in the best interest of these students, and, but we also need to be able to have, I think, give these parents, because they don't have the transportation, to be able to choice where they want to go. Right now, we've got transportation, but it's only limited. Perhaps what we can do is, is open up our transportation for choice in that inset area is another possibility. And I know we're open for choice right now, but perhaps, you know, if these-- And I know we're open for choice right now, but perhaps, you know, if these parents start asking for choice, if there is the opportunity for transportation, it would help.
Excellent.
Well, even if we looked at other North Area schools besides Bay Haven or Booker, I mean, there are other options in the north part of the county that wouldn't be as difficult for traffic and, and travel. I mean, I avoid going down to Sarasota at all costs now because it's almost impossible.
I would, I wish that we could have it open for, for transportation for choice because at one time that was what Janice Me, it was the only reason she would vote for choice was with transportation. So I understand that issue, but I also understand that we have to pay the 60% or 40% of the transportation cost, 40, comes out of the, our, the local budget. So that's something we have to be careful of too. So I'd like to look into this and I, I'd like to spend some time talking to people.
I just want to go on record that if you do bus overlays, it's a 60-40 essentially with the state. We would bear all of that cost if it was.
Yeah, see, and I don't, and that's the reason we stopped it because we couldn't afford it.
But I don't think that precludes having the conversation. I just don't want to end this conversation with the assumption that all transportation is 60-40. In many cases, we bear the entire cost of that.
I think we also ought to look at, I understand there's that $725 or $750 scholarship for transportation. I mean, what are the parameters for that? Does anybody know? Oh, it's, it's been, I think, two years. And I think they apply to Step Up for Students and that can be, I know it can be for going across county lines, but I think it's for if you don't go to your district at school.
And who administers that? We do not administer that program.
I think the state gives the money to Step Up for Students, I believe. I'm not quite sure, but they're transportation scholarships.
I would be very, very careful about taking any money from Step Up. I mean, I'm just not.
No, we wouldn't take it, the parent would.
Okay.
For transportation.
Okay. And I shouldn't let my ideology cloud my vision, but.
It's a transportation, it's a transportation voucher.
I don't know how you guys all feel about Step Up.
No, I agree with you.
Anything else?
About this issue?
About this issue. I think it's an important thing to discuss because I think it happened a long time ago and an actual choice in this county happened in the late 60s when Carolyn Mason was forced to go from her school at Booker to.
That was her choice.
No, I mean, she was forced to move from Booker to Sarasota High School her senior year.
Well, I would even wonder, you know, you look at that brown area for Gochio and, you know, then why is it over here for Gochio too? Why doesn't it just go straight up? And I know that in between those colored, I mean, M, Booker sits in between and goes around.
I know I was there to vote on it.
Clearly, you would never draw those boundaries that way absent a deseg.
That's why we need, well, we were under desegregation.
Yep. I mean, you wouldn't, those aren't geographical decisions, clear.
No, they're not. They weren't.
Anything else?
They even happened before my.
Yes, about that issue.
So we're going to come back in a workshop with more answers, right?
Correct.
And the last item we have for this afternoon is item number 10, the school board operating procedure. Bridgette was going to present this, but she sent us a, a list of procedures since we don't seem to have one in this district to look at and open this up for questions or discussion.
She sent one to us?
Yes, this, all of these.
Oh, all of those. I didn't get this either, Shirley.
No.
I don't believe that went through the board secretary, so it was.
That was all the reimbursement policies, so.
It was in my packet, but.
It was yesterday when we were here.
Oh.
But it has, it starts with, it starts with a policy 6.01 of Lee County and then it goes into Broward and Marion and Alachua and Pinellas.
Was this all on reimbursement? Is that what?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't realize that that's what this item was, so I didn't bring it with me.
Well, I think we probably could. I think we've had some, some tie-up with some expenses being paid for a while and I don't know what that's about.
Oh, I don't.
But we need to address that issue too.
I don't.
We need to take care of that. But I'm, I'm happy to table this until next month.
I would like to table it, but I would also like to be able to move forward with the expenses that have been submitted.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We need to, we need to move forward because there's some expenses that have not been paid.
What's the issue?
Don't know.
Can we make a motion to have the expenses that are pending paid?
Not at a board meeting, not at a workshop.
Not at a workshop, but we can just suggest that. I mean, I think it could be suggested.
How much, how much money are we talking about?
Nickel dime, really, measuring the miners. Let's go forward. We've made the, the point, we'll, we'll discuss it separately. So if there's, is there anything else? We have member comments now, Shirley. Do you have any comments? No? I just want to make a couple of comments. Number one is I happen to have in the last couple of months spent quite a bit of time with our middle school STEM classes at Booker Middle, at Heron Creek, and at Woodland. And wow, there's some wonderful instruction going on in our classrooms and, and spent days, several days. We had a, a Christian school, The Rock from Alachua County that came down in December. And then we had Alachua County government schools, our, our public schools come down last week for a full day of looking through classes, seeing what kind of instruction we're offering in, in our STEM tech active classes. Dr. Mark Pritchard was there with us to have lunch and I know we're, we're doing something today with our tech active classes at our board meeting, but I just wanted to mention what a great experience that was. We have some fantastic teachers who are doing really great things. When you walk into a classroom and students don't know you, and I'm saying like 15 people walk in and nobody notices you, you know something really great, you know, well, no, but you know something really great is going on at that point and this is what happened. And it was the instruction and the model and Dr. Paige Detman was with us because she works for Meteor, which is a classroom design company in Gainesville. And so she was down and with us and Karen Rose. And it was a really great day, a long day, but it was a really great day. And we had, as I say, Gulf Coast Community Foundation was there and they were very happy about the experience. So it was a really, a really great event. So just wanted to, to bring that up and, and say what a great experience it was for me. I need to get into more classrooms.
I'm trying to wait till the flu season's over.
Eric?
I, I have two issues. The first issue is, I don't know if you guys got this pride analysis? And it basically shows the breakdown of effective and highly effective and, I don't know, the zero to one unsatisfactory needs improvement. Is it, is it very close to what it was? So, so, and it, and it does show, it does cause more questions than answers. You know, it begins to think, well, since now we're going to be paying teachers based upon whether they're effective or highly effective or unsatisfactory needs improvement, it almost looks like it depends on what school you're at, that that has some sort of impact on what, what, what you're going to get, which, you know, is only going to cause certain teachers not to want to go to certain schools and to gravitate to other schools. And I don't know if that's because of the quality, one, you think, well, it's because of the quality students, but then you look at Pine View is not the highest. You would think, okay, if it's based upon the quality of students, Pine View would be the highest, then it would go, you know, down from there and that's not the issue. And so the issue is, well, is it certain principals? You know, I know, I know a lot of it's subjective. So is there some, is, I know when you talk about individuals, you're always going to have a discrepancy, but discrepancies are rather large. So I don't know if this is an opportunity for us to provide, you know, some much needed training to the principals and the evaluation. But it clearly shows that, that it's, there's some opportunities for us to improve the system. I also think that because we now are able to, you know, have a greater impact on the local level about how VAM scores are done, that I don't, I don't believe there's any such thing as a perfect evaluation system, but I think that, that we should maybe take advantage of being able to, being able to have local control over the VAM, VAM model, that maybe we can help improve the model. Again, it's very important that people recognize that it's not perfect because if you go into realizing it's not perfect, then people are going to be constantly trying to pick it apart and, and everybody ends up with paralysis. And so recognizing that, that we have an opportunity to improve the system, it's a great starting point, but I think it's something we definitely need to look into. We're going to have people being affected based upon the paycheck, based upon what school they go to. And then I have another issue, but I'll let this percolate.
Following up on that though, there's an incentive now for principals to have highly effective teachers or to rate their teachers highly effective because they will then get a award if they have so many highly effective teachers.
What?
Yes, it's, it's a principal award.
Correct, but it's not based on their teachers being rated highly effective. It's those that qualify for the best and brightest based on SAT cut scores. And so it is not based on the annual evaluation of teacher. It does say that you have to be highly effective and hold the prerequisite 80th percentile or above SAT ACT score. And then based on the percentage of your teachers who meet that criteria versus others, then you receive a bonus. So in Sarasota County, we had eight principals qualify for it, seven charters and the principal of SPHS.
But the principal in order to get this has to have highly effective teachers and the high SAT score, you know, so.
The high hurdle is not the highly effective, the high hurdle is the 80th percentile.
All right. So I would think then they want nice young teachers in their schools so that they can know what their SAT score is. Because the older teachers don't know what their SAT scores are. There's a lawsuit going on about that. But again, in order for them to be the best and the brightest, they have to have highly effective. The teacher has to be graded highly effective.
That is correct.
So, I mean, this is one of those things that really bothers me when the legislature is, is trying to tell us who we should be paying and why we should be paying it and then we have to have all these scores. It is just wrong when we have to make people highly effective in order to get those other dollars because that, they shouldn't be sending out those kinds of bonuses because they don't understand how they complicate the matters. Because they're telling us, we need this highly effective score in order for the principal to get more money and we need this highly effective score for the teachers to get more money. And as long as you're going to be paying them more, there will be some principals that will be working to make sure that their teachers are, are happy and that they'll stay there.
Just want to go back to the fact that two-thirds of our instructional staff is rated highly effective. And the way that we determine cut scores is not based solely on the principal's evaluation, which is pride. There's a student growth component. That student growth component is frequently confused with VAM. VAM is but one way that we get a student growth component to be averaged in with pride. We do have the opportunity to move away from the VAM model. The challenge is we must replace it with a student growth model based on the assessment of their students in their subject. But certainly the system will continue to grow and evolve dating back to when the system was put in place. Statistically, when we determine cut scores, we give the teacher every benefit of the doubt. We add in the standard error. And so as opposed to saying, well, the standard error works out in the wash, we literally add that back in. And when you look at the percentage of our student, of our teachers that are highly effective, it is slightly above the state average. Certainly there are other places that have 80, 90% of their teachers being rated highly effective. We have been told that that will trigger audits, that the state doesn't believe you can have a system in which 90% of your teachers are, are highly effective. But there is no perfect system. It will continue to grow and evolve. I won't get into the, kind of the why, but I'll get into the what as far as how we do determine things. But it's a directive and we're going to follow it the best that we can. But if there are opportunities to move away from VAM and we have the, the ability to do that, certainly that's a conversation that we're open to. One of the things that during collective bargaining that we committed to is that we would not change the methodology for the cut scores. There was a concern that if it were a lean budget year, that we could slide the thing a couple of points and instead of it being a, you know, 66 or 62% of our teachers highly effective, that by moving the cut score, we could get it down to 50% and somehow save money. And so we committed to writing that we will not change the statistical method for determining the percentage or the cut score for highly effective. I do anticipate this year that as we go into the teacher evaluation component, that those teachers are going to go in and fight for every single point. Whereas before they said, eh, what's the difference between highly effective and effective? That's a good evaluation. Now there is money residing on it. And so it will make those conferences a little bit more contentious. Our directive to the principals is not to fight with their teachers. I have zero concern about where the line resides between highly effective and effective and would give the teacher the benefit of the doubt on the highly effective every day of the week. I do have some concerns on the lower end. Have we assigned that cut at the right place? To me, that's a much more important conversation to have is to draw the line between needs improvement, developing and effective. And so our directive to our principals is to work with your teachers. When a teacher says, I have an issue with that, to say, well, provide me some evidence, give me the opportunity, I'll go back and observe you and I'll look just for that one thing. What we cannot do is allow ourselves to get into the following school year in September, October, and a teacher come back and go, now that I have my student growth component, if I just would have gotten one more point on pride, I could have gotten over that magical line to highly effective. At that point, I think we're manipulating the system and dare I say, we're approaching some fraudulent behavior. If that conversation takes place in May-June, I have zero concern about it. Talk about pride in the context of pride, but not in the context of effective and highly effective because there is no determination of effective and highly effective at the end of the year when we do a pride score. It is a score that stands on its own. There is no cut score. One of the things we were asked to provide an analysis of is what would people, what would the breakdown of highly effective and effective be if we only used pride? And it cannot be done because we don't have cut scores for pride. We have cut scores for the combined components. And so it is an intentionally very difficult, literally almost on a teacher-by-teacher basis, when we get into subgroups of teachers and how are art teachers compared to reading teachers? It's a very complex system, but if people have ideas about how to make it better, we do have the ability to allow the system to evolve. I apologize for the long answer.
Eric?
And then I have a second issue. I'm bringing you guys back to earlier this morning when we were talking about the Accelerated Academy and we were talking about dropouts. And then I was saying that I wanted, you know, data and dropout. I apparently was remiss and I didn't realize that a family member of mine works at that Accelerated Academy and I just wanted, I did not know that, I know that she does something. I just forgot the name of the company. I think I've mentioned it to you before, I just didn't, but I was notified that I have a family member who works at that, at that company. But I don't think that I was being overly supportive of that company, so, but that's why I was probably notified that my family member was involved. So when we vote on it, I won't be voting on, on, on that, but.
Thank you for letting us know, but I don't think.
Well, I don't know if conflict of interest because I have a family member who, apparently she's, she's actually a salesperson for Sarasota.
Understanding was that it would have to impact you financially?
Well, I don't know, she might, apparently my sister-in-law, I was going to say who the, my family member is a sale, is, is the sales rep for Sarasota County. And I was bashing the company and that would probably, it's going to make Thanksgiving that much more interesting.
I can assure you, we did not hold that against her when we interacted with her company.
Okay. But I, I don't know if it's my benefit or our family member's benefit, but.
You should know.
Well, we can, I can have a conversation with you about it and we can look at the specific voting conflict law. You haven't had to vote on anything yet, so it's not an issue and even when you have those conflicts.
I can assure you, I will not be voting on anything because it benefits her.
All right.
You have about an hour and a half because it'll be on our agenda this evening.
You're talking about your wife then, huh?
No, we're not talking about my wife.
That concludes our workshop, our me, oh, I'm sorry.
Just before you conclude.
Just before you conclude, I'd like to ask the board to join me in a litigation meeting at the conclusion of the workshop to discuss the case of ET versus the school board, at which the board members, the superintendent and I will be present with the court reporter in the back. And that's all, I just.
Can I, can I just say something? If I, after talking with Art Hardy, if I need to, may I please pull that from the consent agenda? So if, if for whatever reason, after talking with him, he thinks that I need to conflict with.
It's already on New Business, it doesn't need to be moved.
Oh, it's on New Business? I really didn't, I didn't even know what company she was.
Okay, so that concludes our workshop and our board meeting is scheduled for 3:00 PM this afternoon.